Calling the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. May I get a roll call, please?
Whoever's going to be your secretary for the other shifts?
We don't have a secretary.
We haven't had elections, have we?
We haven't had elections, we haven't had a secretary.
So ask.
We got somebody.
Okay, Mr. Barconi.
Here, present. Mrs.
Oh, Mrs.
Better write that down.
Mr. Roscoe.
Present.
Mr. Troutman.
Present.
Mr. Williams here. Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Hudson?
We have three vacancies.
All right. Moving on to the approval of last meeting's agenda. Are there any changes or comments to the minutes as published?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to the approval of the amendment of the agenda for tonight.
Very well.
If we can add unfinished business and select officers.
Okay, aren't we supposed to be at a full membership to have elections, or?
If we can, the attorney can give us a clarification on that based on we're missing one of our attendants, is that right?
Yes.
So when we get there, he can define that definition whether or not we need the whole team here before we can run officers or not.
Okay, moving on back to the approval of the agenda.
I move the approval, the agenda be approved as amended.
Second. I get a call.
Okay. Mr. Troutman.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mrs. Barconi?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Moving on to the first hearing of the public, is there anybody that would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Nicholas, I'm an East Point resident, I've lived in the city for almost sixty years, I have never been to a ZBA meeting before. I have been going to planning commission meetings and city council meetings and some school board meetings even over the last year, year and a half. I did go back and watch the May fifteenth meeting. Mr. Urbil, you did a really good presentation of explaining what the ZBA's function is. I, like a lot of other people, like you mentioned, had thought that the ZBA is in place to grant variances to pretty much whomever for a variety of reasons. And Mr. Urbil, in his presentation, as I'm sure you recall, kind of put it a different way that the board's function is to enforce our ordinances and that variants are to be granted if there's really extenuating circumstances, or if somebody has been treated unfairly, or if there's some crazy reason why they can't comply with what our city's ordinances are. I have been going to planning commission meetings and they have been talking about the master plan that we are.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes as published? Being none, I make motion to approve the minutes as published. Support. May I get a vote?
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Barconi?
Yes.
Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams, yes.
Moving on to the next item, ZBA preface, I do not have a copy to read.
Mr. Chair, there's a, I have it on the screen if that is helpful to you. I can bring my computer over, or I could read it.
Please do. Somebody else have a go.
The City of East Point Zoning Board of Appeals primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. Article seventeen of the East Point zoning ordinance guides the board's decisions. There are seven members of the ZBA plus two alternates. Four members constitute a quorum. A majority vote of those present and voting is required for a motion of approval or denial. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing at which time the appellant will first present their case and then any public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions or of, or clar, excuse me, questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belabored, the chair has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation phase. If the appellant should agree with the board's decision, they have the right, should disagree with the board's decision, they have the right to appeal to the Macomb County Circuit Court within the timeframe established by statute or ordinance. When the agenda item concludes, the applicant is welcome to leave or stay for the remainder of the meeting.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, hearing of the public specifically for the agenda item A, 173758 Mile, Moses Roses.
Well, thank you, dear, appreciate it. Let me first start off by saying thank you very much for making the time and allowing us to be here. You have a beautiful community and as I came in, we noticed the beautiful music going on, that was really, that was, I haven't seen that in a while, that was really, really nice. And one thing I'd like to acknowledge is this lady that came up and mentioned something and I go to these zoning board meetings probably two or three times a week, all over the United States and, and every, every city has their own heart and desire of how they'd like their community to go and, and she's absolutely one hundred percent correct and, you know, the community should really focus on, you know, the future of the community and we know that sometimes things go by the wayside. We drove by in the area and I do see signage for buildings like this, actually half or quarter of the size with signage upwards of three to five hundred square feet of signage on their building, which personally as the sign manufacturer, I would love that, heck, that's a lot of money for me, but in all honesty, that's really an ugly and eyesore and I'm sure that over time, hopefully when new businesses come in, that you can enforce it or whenever you do your new ordinance, that you take in consideration the size of the building and so on and so forth. With that said, what we're seeking, and you have the images in front of you, we looked at this building very closely. It's very easy that we can just redline this thing and say, hey, you know what, just don't waste our time and, you know, go down to the allowable square footage. It's just that when we look at this building and we lay it out and we try to be aesthetically pleasing, we're not trying to make this thing look like Las Vegas or anything of that nature, we're just trying to make the sign kind of conform to the building. Unlike like, right, again, right, probably next door, two doors down, that Moses Roses in comparison to theirs, the building that's quarter of the height has a sign that goes across the entire place or across the street where they're at almost five hundred square feet of signage on one building. We reduce the size to the allowable, which was I believe four hundred fifty-five, fifty-four square feet. It's doable, but it warfs, it absolutely does not look appealing whatsoever and, and I know as your city moves forward, you're looking, not just forcing a compliance, but you want aesthetically appealing images. You know, whatever business it is, you really should at least be noticing that this building is, is what it is and it's not a single line item tenant. For example, was a single tenant, I completely agree. You need a smaller sign for each smaller tenant and that fits perfectly fine on forty, fifty square feet per tenant, that works fine, but when you have such a seismic building, it just looked so much more appealing and it does not overpower what some plastic materials, we use the same material, aluminums that we would use for their products, the LED chips are SMD chips, so, which is really clean looking, so you don't get that spotty look. So basically all you're seeing is like a nice clean font text on a building, pretty straightforward, it lasts a long time, it's quality build and manufactured and put up there. That's the, that's the wall signs, obviously we have two elevations that we're looking at. The second item we're looking at is the pole sign up in the, up in the corner here, right by the entrance. There, the nice thing about what Moses Roses did is they opted not to go with the typical LED screens that you might see out there where it looks like a bunch of dots, where it looks like a gas station or a party store or something like that, they opted to go with what's called a six millimeter screen. This thing actually looks like a portrait, the diodes on there are six millimeters apart, which means the resolution is superior to anything. When you look at it, you think it's an image. So in that case, if it's a holiday or something of that nature, they're publishing up there, it's not going to look like a bunch of dots where it blares in your eyes or anything like that, it actually looks like an image. And the height, one of the reasons we're above the square footage, I think slightly on this one, not the height, the height I think we're in compliance, the setback is all under compliance, everything's under compliance, but we're a few feet over in square footage. The reason for that, we opted to go to a fifty-four inch height screen, we do these all over the United States and that height helps us with things other than just for that. We actually, these are cloud based and cellular. These are open to communities to publish, for example, they set in the day when the extreme sunlight, it brightens up a little bit, but at nighttime, me personally, in the day when the extreme sunlight, it brightens up a little bit, but at nighttime, me personally, I do not enjoy or like light pollution. I don't know if you've ever driven by one of these signs and these things go up to ten thousand nit, that's, that can blind you at night, it's almost like looking at the sunlight, especially at night, it's dark out there and you have this, so these automatically dim down and they actually look very appealing. It has two hundred eighty-one trillion colors, so that means it looks like a photograph unlike an LED screen. So the technology's there, the look is there, is a clean cut finish. Again, I know they're asking for a little bit of your consideration as far as size, but then looking at the scope of the project, it's not, it's not by much and I've, I've got a feeling, I've got a feeling because you guys are looking at the future ordinances, you might consider a scope of building of this magnitude. We actually, what we did was originally we scaled it, oh no, that's, that's too big and then we went download it, you can't even read it. And then this came out to be a perfect mixture of both. And also if you look, the side is facing Eight Mile, the distance is so vast that it, you really needed that look and because the building is so tall, you needed that size letters as well. I, I think especially at that height, those letters look very tiny at that height, even if you're standing right in front of the building, you're going to think those letters are two feet tall in comparison. Please feel free to ask me any questions you have, we're celebrating fifty years in this industry and we've been around a long, long time. And all these signs are, by the way, are UOL certified, we manufacture everything in Pontiac because we're a UOL manufactured facility, we do all our own engineering and size and everything of that nature, so if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me and I'm here to help.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You made a couple of references in comparison, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you. Okay, moving on to the new business of the non-use brands, is there any questions, oh, I'm sorry, you want to speak, sir?
Do you want to say something, Chris?
My apologies, go right ahead. No. You make your presentations and we have discussions and ask questions.
Good evening, my name is Chris Aiello and corporate attorney for Moses Roses. We're six, seven stores wide in the state of Michigan and we want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak to you tonight about how important our brand is and how important the name Moses Roses is. To speak to two issues of difficulties because of the cockeyed nature of this building. If you look at that property, it goes out to Eight Mile but then turns to the right and it was difficult to see it at one point when the original pole sign was up. And so the original pole sign was just tattered, worn, people had run into it, it was, it's probably been there for forty or fifty years, so we decided just to remove the whole thing and start from scratch. But that original sign that had, if you, if you recall and have gone by there, had Valvoline on it and Mobile One on it at one time and it, it's as tall as the proposed sign is. If it wasn't in such a bad condition, we were thinking of saving some dollars and using it, but the proposed sign that we're putting up is as tall as that one was and it's down now with, under the demolition permit. But due to the, the nature of the way that building sits and the trees on Kelly Road, if you see the trees that separate lock, Foot Locker from our building across the street, when you're coming westbound on Eight Mile, it's sort of difficult and we spent an awful lot of time observing what the smaller sign would look like on the east side of the building as you go westbound on Eight Mile and it was difficult to pick up. And keep in mind, the property was, it cost us a lot of money to get that property and we, our brand is everything, but going west, westbound on Eight Mile, it was really difficult under this, under the ordinance sizes for the channel letters to pick up. So as Haytham illuminated and showed us the different sizes and picked it up, that size that you're looking at and the request tonight for the variance, which is I think five inches or ten inches on the signs, really helps the westbound Eight Mile traffic pick it up and then the, run on the Black River and then go to Mackinac. We're the main sponsor in Port Huron for the drone show and the fireworks show and our name gets put up there and we, we participate in that, we participate and sponsor the hockey team in, in Port Huron called the Predators and we're all over their jerseys. And the same goes out into Waterford with probably ten different community events that we, we sponsor and allow the city to use our parking lot. Every type of group that is formed in Waterford is allowed to use our parking lot and outreach programs and donations and so, we're pretty active and so we, we will not change it, that's part of our success and so the same thing goes here in, in East Point, where we've already started out with the Tiger Cats, if you're familiar with the East Point Tiger Cats, we've already helped them out twice. And so, once we get going and operate and put some more money in our pocket, we plan to continue to do that with them, so appreciate it, thanks.
Moving this. I would ask you to, please remember to keep your comment to three minutes.
Yep. Okay, Jennifer Nicholas again, yep, I agree that they are beautiful signs, it's too bad that they're not in compliance with our ordinances. One of the signs is about double the square footage of what our ordinance allows. I know they're comparing to other signs in the cities, that, that's part of the problem. There are businesses that have signs that are not in compliance, they've been grandfathered in, the understanding is that if those businesses change ownerships, the signs have to change too. I have nothing against Moses Roses, they are an excellent company from what I understand, they are well-known throughout the community. I think if their signs were the signs of a matchbook cover, they would still do excellent business, but here, what I'm understanding, the ZBA's function is to determine whether there is practical difficulty in making them comply with our ordinances and I've not heard anything from them saying that making them, holding them to our ordinances is going to cause them difficulty. You know, it is what it is. They knew what that building was when they purchased it, or I don't know at what point in the process they ended up purchasing it, but they selected that location, they selected that building, they know our ordinances, they've been working with our city planner on this for the site plan, the special land use approval, all of this is known to them, you know, I'm not a planner, I'm not a building official, I'm not an attorney, but I think that Mr. Myers, Mr. Urbil, Mr. Albright and even Mr. Aiello could probably speak more on what the criteria is on what this board's function is, whether to approve or deny this variance. And in my opinion, as a resident, I don't feel that they've demonstrated any type of hardship and as a resident, you know, I can't speak for the whole community, but I always hope that our board's commission, city council represents the best interests of the residents and what they want for the community. And in something like this, again, I don't think it's going to make a difference if, if we require them to comply with our ordinances. Thank you for your time.
The hearing of the public regarding this agenda item. Being none, we will move on to questions and discussions of the board members.
Mr. Chair, you may want to hear the city's planner's perspective on his report, if you want that in verbal before you have your discussion.
City planner, ready to speak it?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair.
By all means, proceed.
So just to confirm, the application is before you because of the size of both the two wall signs and the sign area of the pole sign. Other than that, the, the signs meet or can meet the rest of the ordinance. The, I did want to acknowledge and correct an error in your packet as far as the extent of the variance. The applicant is before you requesting three variances for the southeast facing sign, that is as it's listed in the packet, eighty-eight square feet are proposed. The maximum, this, this condition is based on the building frontage, the length of the building on the street frontage. By, by virtue of how long the building is on the southeast facing side, the maximum of fifty-four square feet is allowable and again, they're proposing eighty-eight square feet. Number two had some copy and paste error in it. In that case, on the southwest facing wall sign, fifty-five square feet is, excuse me, forty-one point two-five square feet is allowable and fifty-five square feet is proposed, so the variance they're seeking is thirteen point seven-five square feet for the southeast facing side. And then for the pole sign, the variance is thirteen point nine-two square feet, the maximum is fifty and they're proposing a sign that's sixty-three point nine-two. In the packet, on the pole sign, the, the maximum allowable is fifty square feet and what is drawn and what is proposed is sixty-three point nine-two square feet. So my apologies for the, the error in the request section of the, of the report, but those are the accurate numbers. The, so those three things are where the sign is not approvable by us because it does not meet the zoning ordinance. As has been alluded to, the ZBA per zoning ordinance should find that a practical difficulty has been demonstrated and make those findings based on a series of factors which are listed in your, in your report and I won't read them, but I'm happy to talk about any of them if you'd like. There are standards for practical difficulty and then there are standards for health, safety and welfare related to whether or not the intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance would be upheld by granting the variance effect on adjacent property and surrounding neighborhood potential nuisances. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the particulars of the, of the requests or of those standards if you'd like.
Okay, is there any discussion or a question among the board members? We'll try that again.
I do have a question for, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, sorry. Haytham? Haytham. So you made a couple of references to, in comparison to across the street?
Yeah, like the Foot Locker, which I think is fairly new and I believe the, also there's a hair salon, I think greatly adjacent, I mean, the Foot Locker logo alone is upwards probably around a hundred and fifty square feet just for the logo by itself, it's quite massive. I mean, they use it as an art piece, but it's a sign, it's still a channel letter, it's no different than this channel letter, but in the shape of their logo, just like Moses Roses has a logo, but we're not putting eye here because it would be just too massive. The logo alone would be nearly a hundred and something square feet if we were to put the logo up there. Again, they're not looking to take advantage of the community whatsoever, it's just that this looks really appealing and, and I, and I do believe that because as you progress and you realize they're looking to do a master plan, again, this might, like the young, you know, lady mentioned, you know, is your duty to comply to the city, but at the same time, they do have a situation here where there were other buildings adjacent to it that they were, they were removed and because of the distance, they do have somewhat of a hardship. I, I understand that you really, you try not to deviate too much, but at the same time, having a minute size of a sign, you know, to be visible from Eight Mile and at that height, that building is just odd, it's just, it's just so big that anything less than this really gets dwarfed. And I think that's probably why other buildings in the area were allowed, especially on the Eight Mile location. If we were closer down, if you were next to a community or next to a residence, I completely understand, if you're facing them, you don't want the extra lighting and anything of that nature, but being right on Eight Mile in that intersection, it's, it's not that far-fetched of a request and again, you know, we're not here, nobody's here trying to make you guys do anything that you guys are not comfortable with, but at the same time, it just, it makes sense, it makes sense and I completely understand, you know, why someone might be against it because hey, you know, if we give it to them, we have to give it to everybody, that's not always the case and every meeting I go to is, is, is unique, every building is unique. If we felt that this was completely identical to another cookie cutter building next door, we wouldn't be here and we've been trying to have this meeting, I think, two or three times, but you know, we just couldn't get a quorum and everybody's busy, you know, you know how it is with, with the way with communities are. And so we felt that it was an important thing and we wanted to be, personally come here and discuss that with you and hopefully we can, if not this, maybe a compromise of some sort, but we were just wanted to be able to present to you that this actually does not look overpowering whatsoever and when, at that height, because this building is just so large and I'm sure back in the day, it made sense, the ordinance made sense because maybe these buildings were a little different or whatever the case might be and someone said, hey, you know what, let's just throw this blanket ordinance out there that says this, but when you look at this building, it's just unique. We have buildings in other cities as well, you go to them, in the city sometimes maybe they miss doing it and this ordinance, but they do have ordinances that say, you know, if the building is this much bigger than normal, we'll allow another couple percentages here and there. So, and in reality, that Moses Roses could fall in compliance just by reducing it by about ten inches in height, but that would squish the letters and it's just, again, it's all about aesthetics and it looks really good and the letters are so thin, couldn't you guys make them thicker letters for God's sakes? I know it's a popular logo, but those letters are so thin, they're anorexic up there. So I think in almost every city, that has been the issue of having, because their letters is just so thin that you barely, you can barely illuminate them as it is and it's been a challenge, but again, it's just a font, we're not looking to make a major statement and like you said, it's a staple logo. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that's what he was referencing.
There's a few of them out there. It's, again, I, I think somebody thought about it and came up, you know. That building would look great because aesthetically, I. I, maybe I wouldn't have done the Foot Locker like that myself, but it's, it's their logo, you know, it's, it's nice. It makes it look like a community, you know, like. It's a branded building. And their way of branding a building is their name. Rather than putting their, they have a big circular logo design. I think like in Waterford, they allow them to put their big logo. The logo alone by itself without the letters, I think is like a hundred and twenty square feet. You know, it's a circular logo, looks like a rose, you know, that sort of thing. And, but that wouldn't be fair here. It just wouldn't make sense. Here, we just figured the font, text on the wall and as thin as an anorexic. It's hard to manufacture these things.
I'm stuck on the safety piece, the density of the sign. Because when you mentioned the trees coming. East, I mean, coming west, that's all Eight Mile. And then you have Eight Mile coming off of Harp, um, is it Harper Woods? Am I correct? It's in an angle. It's like in an angle. So I'm thinking about the rain and the sun as it changes and switches as a senior comes down driving. That's the safety piece I'm concerned about. And then you said the sign, the, the letters itself would be close.
On the building?
Yeah, on the building.
The building, they're flat. They don't change. They're, they're static. No changing or anything of that nature. They're static, just flat on the wall. They're elevated. Really, they're high up there.
So there's, there's no LEDs? That's my question.
Internally, they're internally, all, all channel letters now no longer use the high voltage neon. We used to use fifteen thousand volt transformers in there, which was a fire hazard. Now you don't see any bulbs or anything in these. They're all internally, it's called an SMD LED chip. It's three chips in one and they're, they populate inside of the, the letters. As a matter of fact, even the faces we upgraded from was an acrylic. You guys are familiar with acrylic plastics? This is a polycarbonate, which is a fire resistant material used now for the faces. And it's a solar grade so that it doesn't tarnish or fade in the sunlight.
And that's the pole sign just by itself or just the one, the secondary?
Pole sign is also LED illuminated. The internals are all LED. So there's no fluorescent bulbs. So it'll be consistent lighting. There's no like.
It wouldn't change up on you?
Yeah, exactly.
That's nice. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for asking.
So I, I have a question about the. You saying, when you, when you were referring to the pole sign. You were concerned about the distance. From which it would be noticed coming westbound on Eight Mile. Is that what you were referring to?
Well, you know. Eight Mile has a fast through traffic. I, I think every sign on Eight Mile is probably twice the size.
Okay, so my, my question is the, the pole sign according to the, the. To the graphics and everything, it complies. So what were you proposing as far as the pole sign itself? Are you trying to make that bigger?
Like as you said, it's thirteen point nine, we're asking for thirteen point nine square feet more than the compliance. The compliance is, I believe, fifty square feet. And with the technology available, see LED signs, they don't come in. They're not like pieces of dots that we put together and build the size we want. They come modular. So when we manufacture these, they come in twelve point six inch pieces. So when we build them, you end up with this size or completely shrink down to this size. So for this to be the proportion that we did, it just happened to come up to sixty-three point nine-two square feet.
Square feet.
And that's where that size came from is just because we're using standards. And also what, what you want to do in, in the future as you do things. Because in your ordinance, it should stay, you should probably add in your ordinance as well. I think it's important we do that in Troy, Pontiac, Oak Park. And in your ordinance, you should state in the fact that a defective sign must automatically be remotely turned off. Or, or must be repaired within a certain amount of timeframe. So when we stay within standard materials and standard things, that can be done. When we start modifying things, like I know you'd like to have a, a magic number. Everybody uses even numbers like, hey, let's make it fifty square feet. Let's make it sixty square feet. Let's make it thirty square, you know, standard numbers like a four by eight sort of thing. Unfortunately, with technology, all metrics, nothing comes out to a standard number. So with this technology, spare parts are available within hours. Where if we were trying to make it that standard size, sometimes it's not. That's why you'll see, you ever seen a CVS sign or a Walgreens sign is out for like six months, seven months? Is because they were forced to use a specific size and those parts sometimes takes three to six months to get.
Well, aren't they, aren't they rang? You, you're talking about the LED versus what you're using, which is not LED, right?
No, these are, everything's LED now. Whether it's, there's a, there's a difference between an internal LED and an LED screen.
Right.
So the LED screen unfortunately comes in specific modules, which is three twenty, millimeters, three hundred and twenty by three hundred and twenty millimeters per panel. Which, that's why I keep referring to the twelve point six inches. That's a standard size. And those standard sizes, when you put them together, you end up with that.
That extra thirteen feet.
Yeah, with thirteen point nine square feet larger. Which is about, I would say about.
So my question still remains, how far from, let's say you're, you're at ninety-four and you're coming westbound on Eight Mile. How far do you? Are you trying to get the sign seen? Are you trying to get it seen off of ninety-four?
No, no. I think in reality.
That's a long way.
Sign more than a, a block or a couple of blocks away.
Okay, well, that's my question.
We're not trying to do like the, what do you call those, uh, uh, gas stations on the freeway where you wanna get them because they exit?
Right.
We're not trying to do anything like that. As a matter of fact, the overall height is less than the ordinances require, allows. You're allowing twenty square, twenty feet. Correct? Two hundred and forty inches is allowable. We're at the hundred and ninety, we're actually lower than the overall height. So we're not trying to. Beam this thing down to, you know, get people to come over for work.
Okay, well, that was, that was one of my questions. And then you said. You mentioned something about it's not in a neighborhood, but a neighborhood is.
Adjacent.
Right, yeah.
What I'm saying, we, we get a lot of, um, we have, we do a lot of, we probably do more church signs than anybody in the United States. We, we probably do five a day all over the place. And a lot of churches are inside a community. Those signs are completely different. And they all ask me, hey, I want a big tall sign. I go, you can't do that in the, in the city. So those signs are usually limited, the entire height can't be more than five feet high. And they could, they have to be like fifteen feet setback from the road. They have to turn off at ten o'clock at night. Cause you know, you don't want that light. Even though all these are photocells censored, so they, they actually dim down. The national average is about two to three percent above ambient light. So automatically registered, like if it's in this room, it'll register the light in this room. And only go about two percent, because if it goes zero, it'll just be black, you know, it'll just be, it'll turn off. So it goes about three percent higher than the ambient light. So you see, it won't, it not even be as this bright, for example. See how bright this is, right? This to me is too bright. So it'll actually be probably eighty percent less than this for nighttime because it, it's just, it's, it's light pollution. So that's how that technology works.
So I understand the panels and all of that. I'm just asked, I was just asking these questions because the. The distance makes, you know, it, it, if, the bigger the sign, if it's LED, whether it dims or not. It's, if it's gonna be on, let's say till midnight. Whatever's the ti- time the store closes or what have you. That still affects a part of the neighborhood. So. That's, that's why I asked about the distance and everything. So I understand the standard panels and different things.
Identity is important. I think identity is very important. Cause you want it to be, you want it to feel as part of the background. You don't want it to be the thing that. As you're driving, be like a, a police car. You know how police cars, you, you, they want that extra blaring blue and red thing. These dims to the point to where it's just an image, not even a, you won't even, can't really tell it's an LED sign because it's a graphic.
Yeah, but you have to think about the, the residents in that square, you know, that between. You know, so if it's, if it's.
It's higher.
It's across the street also commercial? I believe it's all. Everything, it's as far, it's the farthest point from any residential area that's at, where it says our pole sign location.
Yeah, I see, I see where it is.
So I don't think there's anything that's visible. I'm sorry? Right, it's the farthest point.
You're done? If I can piggyback off Commissioner Williams.
Yes, sir.
I, I think the problem fixed itself because I thought the challenge would be the BP sign, which is across the street. But that's, that's been moved because now it's a Shell sign. The brightness of that BP gas station sign. I thought that would be a, a clash with your sign, but it kind of fixed itself because it's not, no longer, it's no longer BP gas. It's Shell gas and that sign is totally different and it's smaller. But it's a bright sign and I thought that would be a clash.
Yeah, and you know those fuel price signs also, they're, they don't dim.
Right, it stays, stays bright all night long, right?
All night long. They blind you and they're not, they're not very community friendly.
Right.
Yeah, I, I know what you mean.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. Is there any further discussion or questions from the board members?
Being none, I have a question for Moses Roses counselor. I would ask you to define exactly what is a hardship for the company to bring these signs into compliance? Why can't you?
The configuration of the property itself and then the configuration of the building itself. I listened to the, one of the citizens speak. At the time of the application and the purchase of the building and. I don't think anybody figures out this, what the sign is going to look like at the time you purchase the building. You never, on your, on your blueprints, you never get to that point because all these signs are a separate permit. And then construction is always different, like. We just, you know, I don't know, any, any project that I. Out of all seven buildings that we've ever considered. The size, the font size of the channel letters until it was time. To address that during construction. You just don't buy your building or place on any construction drawing the size of your. Your letters until, until you're done or you're halfway through construction because generally everything changes. Especially for your signage or, or your brand or your name or your, or maybe we just wanted to put our logo up there.
So they purchased the building without prior consult or review of the sign ord- sign ordinances for the city?
I, if you want the truth, I've never purchased any property in my life and I'm a developer too. In consideration of a sign ordinance, we address it at such time. I mean. Generally, when we're asking for the small amount of relief that we are tonight, it's really hard to. Hard to get to this point. This project's three years old. And it's taken a tremendous amount of time to determine. How we, how this brand should look and how it should be polished. Not just to throw anything up there, but something that resembles our hard work and effort and. And how we want this building to look and how it looks in the community. And the channel letters here, they're, they're meant, what the proposed size, the size that we're proposing that, that are meant for the side of this building. So what I'm referring to specifically since you asked is the siding, that's all brand new. It didn't have to come down that far. It could have gone up. We, we didn't have to drag it all the way down as close as it is to the windows. We could have kept that up further. And made, made that siding smaller. You follow me? We didn't have to construct it that way. We could have saved money and brought it up, but we didn't. And so once we got done with the siding, then we addressed the signs and say, how big should the signs be? That, that resemble all the hard work and our, our brand. Or we could have made, made, installed a different product on the outside of the building. Something that would more have been aesthetically pleasing to put our logo on, which is like a. A big Santa Claus face. He's sat, he's Moses Roses. Somebody designed it. It's pretty cool. You have to check it out, but we could have put him there, but. We've kept this true to every store. All the stores have these, 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 the channel letters. I don't, I don't. I think the only one that might be smaller is Port Huron because the building's smaller. The facade is smaller. So the, the front and the back have Moses Roses on both the front and the back, but they're smaller channel letters because the building's a lot smaller. And if we were to put bigger channel letters on that, they wouldn't have looked as, so it's just the opposite of this. We need just a little bit of relief and. The city to make our building look the way we need it to look. And Port Huron was the same. We just reduced the size of the channel letters because we didn't need them that big. The building didn't warrant it. So this is not like we're, it's a grab where we're here asking you, hey, we want these big lights at night so everybody can see us and we pop up. It's not that way. This, this is all designed by a designer who's part of our team and he designs every team. He designs all the hats, all the shirts, all the T-shirts. And so we've put a tremendous amount of effort into designing the building. And when you come inside, you'll see what, 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 what we did. It's beautiful. Polished floors. We, we, we don't, we don't go off shelf with cabinets. We have our cabinets millworked. We spent a lot of money on this project. And so we hope that you can help us keep our brand happy, keep us happy, keep the people of the neighborhood happy. You won't know any difference between if, if, if the signs were designed. Ten, ten, five inches one way or five inches the other. At that height, we need some help. We need to, we, we need to be able to see it from the street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions or discussions from the board members?
I, I would like to say as a, a business owner of, of this city. I did my due diligence and my research for the property that. I was interested in obtaining and using for my business. And I did visit the city prior to me signing or making any commitment. For that property and I did my research to see if. The, the building or the city would allow me to operate and run my brand the way that I wanted to. So I think that. As a business owner, you do have to do your due diligence.
Well, I agree with you. I don't, I, I don't disagree with you. But under the circumstances of this cases, this was a. This, this is a build to suit. And so build to suits on all of my projects that I've worked on my entire life all change. And that's why we have times we provide as-built drawings to, to the city as we walk and work with them saying. You know, we're gonna change this, we're gonna change that and we get permission and we do as-bills. And so I understand what you're saying, but. I've never done it in the inverse where I, I've built my project according to my sign size. I've never really done that. I've always, it's, the, the building itself always dictates what it can, what can be done. And then, then, then the sign comes after. I've never sort of. Constructed a, a building with the foresight that I should put twenty-four inch. Channel letters on the front. Something I guess I could look at in the future. But this was almost a complete tear down. If you remember, there was Rex's diner there for all those years and. They had the bread basket was there and then that sort of dirty old Valvoline. Gas station that we had to take out and do some, some work on. So. Hopefully we've improved it to all of your, to the entire community's benefit. And so again, we're not asking for a lot. We're asking for your help to be successful and work with you guys in the future. We'll be good citizens. Mark my word. I say that to everyone and we've never had a problem in any of our cities. Nothing. Thanks.
Thank you.
My, my question that would be. And I don't. So you're, you're saying that every, everything as far as the building, when you purchased and everything, you, you laid out the plan to the city. And the city okayed the plan without even, even thinking about the signage? Is that what you're telling us?
It's a separate, it's a separate permit. So at the time of application, so if you're familiar with these, this project. In a global sense, they were applications and they were.
Right, in the beginning, yes.
They were awarded on a merit basis, but no, we didn't submit the size of the channel letters or anything like that at the beginning. It was all, you know, as you move in construction, sometimes you just gotta change. And I had no idea how long, how big the facade was gonna be on this one.
So.
Just needed to be removed.
In, in, in the event that this is not approved, how would that hurt your, your business? If you had to go down instead of going up?
Number one. Number two, all the work that we put in. Three, I don't see a reason not to approve it. Three, I don't see a reason not to approve it. I don't think it's a big request and how would it hurt? I think the brand name is more visible with these sized channel letters from Kelly, from Eight Mile. And that's why we, let's be honest, we're a retail store. That's why we picked this location. And so that's the only way to be successful and competitive in my business. If you read the newspapers about what we're, where our business is at right now in Michigan, it's like, it's extremely competitive. And so you've, you've got to have the right area, you've got to have the right location. And we feel we do in East Point and we're, we're not shy about spending our money here. And, and so I, I could have made smaller channel letters and saved money and I could have made the pole sign smaller, I didn't have to do LED, I could have just put my name on there. We're spending eighty-seven thousand dollars on signs. Eighty-seven thousand, I didn't have to. But that benefits not only me, I think, and that's why I'm here requesting it, but it benefits the entire community. You will see what this place looks like, especially the LED signs, they're awesome. Go up to Port Huron and see it. It's awesome. And they just roll specials just like everybody does, just like CVS and everybody else, just rolls out daily specials and stuff like that. And then, you know, participates in the community. Our community uses our, our LED sign for advertising events. Pride Week was using our, in Waterford all week, our sign for their event coming up. So we're like, we're deep in the community. So we work with everybody and you will be proud of that building and you will, if you've driven, if you've been there before and you've seen what it looked like, you'll see what it looked like. But once we get the flower beds up and everything, it's going to be nice. It'll be real nice. And then not to mention the little dog park that we got going into. If you have a dog, you can walk it down Eight Mile and there's going to be a dog park. And so it'll be cute.
So, so is it the brand that's? Uh, in jeopardy or is it, is it the sign?
The sign isn't the brand.
But your marketing strategy, does that take you, vary you away from your, your marketing strategy if you're not awarded?
Well, it doesn't take me away from the strategy, but it improves my chance of success in your community that let people see us, you know? So there's two ways to do it. When you open up a business, you're either going to have, you're going to have the ability to bring in business based on your location. So picture this, Eight Mile and Kelly is the internet for us, that's why we bought that location. It's the internet. If not, I have to direct people to me. Marketing and advertising is crazy expensive and it's like pulling, you remember you learned in school where they said the next pair of shoe designs for women, they go to their closet and they open up a closet and whatever shoe falls out of a woman's closet is the new design, whether it's 20 or 30 years old? We, we, we don't want that, that's why we picked that location. And that's what most competitors want, is a location where you don't have to spend tremendous amount of money directing traffic to you, people driving by can't see you. Therefore, the taxes that I'm going to pay on that building at thirty-eight thousand dollars a year, I need to, I need to, I need to benefit from that. That's a lot, that's a lot of money. And so as a result of charging me all those taxes for that corner, you've got to give me some help. You know, all right, all right, would have to bury myself in the middle of Kelly and then go spend thirty-eight thousand dollars on the internet and drive the traffic to me somehow. Or I pay the taxes to the city because I've got a great location, I've got a great corner, I've got a great location and I can benefit as, from that corner. And so that sign will help drive that traffic to me. That's all part of the strategy. It, it truly is. And what comes to the better, the better location is the taxes. You know, we're, we're not, your military in, in East Point is, you know, it is what it is. And so we'll pay the freight, help us out, that's all we're asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know why the women buy more shoes now.
Any further questions or discussions from the board? Mr. Williams?
Excuse me, you're going to have to talk in your mic, this is recorded.
I'm sorry. Are we able to actually vote on this tonight without, without having seven?
Right, we were just having a discussion and the discussion's finished, well, somebody can propose a motion.
Okay.
That being.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, just add a little clarification, yes, there is a quorum established tonight, so these zoning board of appeals can vote on these various variance requests. In order to pass a motion, there must be a majority of the members present this evening. So of course that would be three members. Because there are three variance requests for three different signs, there would need to be three votes made. And the options would include if the board feels that the requirements in the city ordinance have not been satisfied, meaning a practical difficulty has not been established, then the vote would be to deny the variance request. If the maker of the motion believes that one or more of the variance request up tonight have met the burden of establishing a practical difficulty, then the maker should then go through the practical difficulty standards if they are applicable. And those are contained on both page four and five of the planner's report. The board could also make or approve a variance which is something less than the requested square footage amount this evening. You could not exceed what's been requested, but you could still do something lesser than what has been requested this evening. But even if you wish to do that, you would still have to establish and find that there were practical difficulties for the particular variance request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Counselor, so we have to make motions sign by sign?
Yes. And those are, those are, when you look on page two of the planner's report, middle of the page under request, the planner sets forth one, two, and three, what the individual variance request are. At the beginning, the meeting of the planner did correct item two, the square foot variance request is, I believe, thirteen point seven five. So for number one, it would be a variance request of thirty-four square feet?
That's correct.
And then for number two, the second sign, it would be a variance request of thirteen point seven five square feet. And then for the pole sign, it would be a variance request of thirteen point ninety-two square feet. And again, the board could grant something less than the amounts requested, but again, the standard of practical difficulty has to be found.
Okay. Page two. Do you want to make a motion?
Just pick one, anyone? I would, let's start with number one then. Place forth the motion that we vote on the variances of.
Excuse me, you need to talk in your mic, this is recorded.
Sorry about that, yeah. I would take, let's take number one and vote on that one if that's okay with the board. Okay, 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 all right, we're learning. I make a motion that we. Let me retract that because I'm leaning towards something else, I'm kind of more on the pole sign than.
They don't, Chair, they don't have to be in any particular order. If you want to start with the pole sign, you could start with the pole sign and make a, a motion to either approve or not approve and so on and so forth.
I want to place forth the motion to approve the pole sign based on the information that we have.
Okay, and is that a motion to approve based on a finding that the requirements in section seventeen point zero six of the zoning ordinance have been found with regard to practical difficulty standards and also health, safety, and welfare standards?
You want me to repeat all of that?
No, you could just, in my question, you could say yes, that's what I'm, I'm finding.
Yes, that's what I'm finding.
And those findings are contained in the planner's report?
Yes.
So, and again, just to repeat, it would be the, the variance request is due to unique circumstances of, of property. And then the planner goes on examples of unique circumstances include properties with odd dimensions or unusual easements. Unique circumstances do not include business, family, or financial reasons. So you're finding that the variance request establishes that standard?
Yes, everything is established.
Okay, and that the variance request is due to unique circumstances of property and it's not shared by neighboring properties in the same zone? If the circumstances for which a variance is warranted are shared among numerous properties in the same zone, then the variance request should be denied. It may be better to consider amending the zoning ordinance. And you're, and you're finding that, that.
It's in compliance, yeah, okay, yeah.
And then C, the problem is not self-created either by the applicant or an applicant's predecessor. The proper interpretation is to ask whether the applicant took some affirmative action that created the need for the variance. Practical difficulty cannot be self-created. Being self-created includes actions of the current property owner and actions of all previous owners.
Yes, that's in compliance.
And then D.
That's in compliance.
Strict compliance with area setbacks, frontage height, bulk, or density would be unreason, would unreasonably prevent the landowner from using the property for a permitted purpose and would thereby render the conformity unnecessarily burdensome for other financial reasons.
Yes.
Then E, the variance would provide substantial justice to the applicant as well as the other property owners in the district. A reduced relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with property design and rights in the neighborhood.
Yes.
And no lesser variance options are practical.
Yes.
And then under two, health, safety, and welfare standards, the variance will not adversely affect the purposes of this zoning ordinance or the master plan.
Yes.
And adjacent property and surrounding neighborhood, the variance will not be of a substantial detriment to the adjacent property, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and will not diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area.
Yes.
And community of East Point, the variance will not impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the community.
Yes, that'd be it.
The variance will not create a nuisance such as light, air, sound, odor pollution, traffic, congestion, or fire and flood damage.
Yes.
I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Support.
All right, we have a motion and a support, may I get a vote?
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Ms. Barconi?
No.
Mr. Troutman?
No.
And Mr. Wilson?
No.
Moving on, we still have items one and two, the channel letters. Are we, can we group those as one item or do we still need to vote on each one individually?
I would recommend each one individually because it's two different variance requests, two different signs.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Okay, so the, the first sign would be the larger sign or what are we looking at first or does it matter?
The larger sign.
Larger sign.
Wants a increase of thirty-four square feet.
So I'm, I make a motion that we, we deny that part for the extra thirty-four square feet for the larger sign.
For the reason they.
For the reason of not, what is the first?
Failed to display practical difficulty?
Yeah, failure to display difficulty and the fact that I don't think it would, it would hurt the, the business itself by it being on the building. You can still see the sign, you still have the LED footage, you just have to, you know, meet us in the, in the middle because the thirty, thirty, the, the length is a lot larger than our, our actual compliance. So maybe if we can cut that down or something and bring it back to the table, I think it would, it would benefit us more. So the size of it, what we allow and what they're asking, the difference is just too much.
Chair, is the maker of the motion requesting a variance request less than what's being requested by the applicant then, under the circumstances? And if so, and if so, then instead of requesting thirty-four square foot variance, something less than thirty-four square feet would be made.
Are you saying they should be less than thirty-four feet or are you saying they should come within compliance of the ordinance?
I think if we, if we come and if, if they can't come into compliance with the ordinance, then we have to come with something, come back with something less than the amount that they're asking, the thirty-four square feet, we have to reduce that size. You understand what I'm saying?
Even under those circumstances, a practical difficulty would need to be found by the, by the maker of the motion and ultimately the board?
Well, the practical difficulty of, I mean, the, the allowance that we're allowing is fifty square feet, right?
Right.
Okay, so if we can't meet that, then we have to come back to the table with something that's either in compliance or give us a reason why that extra thirty square feet is needed. And I don't think that that's been properly addressed.
Well, the maximum square footage for a sign in that area is fifty-four square feet. They're proposing eighty-eight square feet, so they would need a very, in order to allow that, they would need a variance of thirty-four square feet.
Correct. And I, I don't think at this time we are able to give that much of a variance as a ZBA board. I mean, that's just what I'm proposing.
Are you proposing something less than the, something greater than fifty-four square feet but less than eighty-eight square feet?
Well, the variance itself, based on the, where the building is, how it's been presented, I think that we should go off of what we're allowing. If we cut, if we have to later on after we do our project and set up, set up the new variances and different things like that, I think that we can properly evaluate it then. But it's the way it's written now, the city ordinance and everything, I think we should stick to the variances that we've, we've come up with.
The ordinance.
The ordinance, yes. Denied as written with the thirty-four square feet.
You clearing that motion, Counselor?
It's a motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
For failure to establish practical difficulty standard.
Very well. Have a motion on the floor, do I have support?
Troutman, second.
Support.
We have motion and support, may I get a vote?
Mr. Williams? Yes. Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
Ms. Barconi?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
No.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Moving on, I make a motion to deny the second item for the request for variance thirteen point seven five feet based on the same grounds as Mr. Williams.
I second that.
I have a motion in support, may I get a vote?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Barconi?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
No.
Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams, yes.
Alright, that concludes our new business for the sign variance. Thank you very much, uh, my apologies, gentlemen, but not quite. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, uh, Counselor, are we, have the proper numbers to have elections?
No, in reading the, um, in reading the, uh, bylaws that have been approved by this body, uh, the votes have to be by the entire board. And so unfortunately, I don't believe that, uh, you can certainly discuss, uh, the election amongst yourselves this evening, that would be appropriate. Uh, perhaps a discuss who would be interested in, uh, the, uh, the three elected positions, but to actually vote, um, according to the bylaws, that, that needs to come from the entire board. So how that works now is the, the members, um, who have that position, they hold that position until, um, their successor is voted on.
Are we empowered to, uh, say impose a, or ask for a temporary secretary to fill the office? As our last secretary was, uh, Alex...
Yeah, the, the, or, or your bylaws provide that, um, this board can designate a secretary, but it has to be a non-board member.
A non-board member?
Yes. You may want to, in the future, revisit your bylaws, uh, to make those adjustments, um, uh, to perhaps, uh, allow voting to take place of officers without the full, um, without the full body present. But again, that would be for a later, a later date.
Mr. Myers, you had something?
The attorney is def, defining two things for you. One, we should change our, our policies so that you don't have to have a full board to make these kind of decisions in the future. Number two, um, he has recommended if you want a, a temporary secretary to fill this role, it would have to be a non-board member. And that is down to three of us. And so I raised my hand kindly and graciously to offer my services if you so need, because you can't use your own board for temporary.
Chair, also, if it was, uh, if the other, the members that were not able to attend, uh, somehow had a scheduling conflict, this board can always schedule a special meeting, uh, simply for the purposes of conducting the election, uh, if it's been established that all of the members are going to be in town, are otherwise available to attend that special meeting.
Alright.
Correct.
That, or would, uh, you recommend a, uh, motion to review the bylaws at a future meeting?
You, you could make that motion, it's not, it's something that you could just ask city administration to add to, uh, in a, a future agenda.
Very well, I think we'll do that. Right. Uh, I don't think we need a motion for Mr. Myers to temporary secretary for us, do we?
Do we have to motion that?
I, I would recommend...
Okay.
Because the bylaws do say the board shall, or may designate, and so under those circumstances, that would be...
Thank you. I make a motion to, uh, I'm, Mr. Myers, to be a temporary secretary until such time as this board can have duly elected member.
Support.
I have a motion, support, may I get a vote?
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Barconi?
Yes.
Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, next motion, a big motion to, at our next meeting, review the language of our charters so we can possibly bypass this problem with not being able to elect without a full board. Have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in support, may I please get a vote?
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Barconi?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams, yes.
Okay, that goes on for the unfinished business and some new business. Uh, moving on to the second hearing of the public, would anybody wish to speak?
Good evening, Mary Hall, Rafford, uh, in East Point. I was listening to, uh, the meeting earlier, but the audio was really bad, to the point where it was skipping. And so I was hoping to get here before you got finished. Thankfully, East Point police were not out there, so, it is, what can I say? I'm glad I got here in time to hear your decision, because, um, I think it was the right decision on all counts. And I say that because of my involvement with the planning commission and knowing that buildings, we can't really allow buildings to direct us, but we have to deal with, um, the written guidelines as they are, even if we don't agree. And so I was glad to see that, and hopefully in the future, um, we'll continue to see that and do what's right for the city. And I appreciate your time and your effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other hearing of the public?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident, thank you. Um, I feel that you did what I am understanding the role of the ZBA, um, is supposed to do tonight. I was kind of stunned that questions that you asked were not answered. Um, I don't think we ever did hear what the practical difficulty was, what, um, any of the requirements. I know in the paperwork that was in the agenda, the handwritten, um, explanations they had didn't address any of the standards. And I am grateful that you all took the time to just not listen to the double talk and things about how great the business is gonna be and how beautiful it's gonna look inside. None of those things have anything to do with upholding our city's ordinances. The sign ordinance, um, actually was reviewed once again last year to make sure that everything was as it should be, and going forward, um, that we are going to try and enforce all of the ordinances, signs, lighting, setbacks, um, you know, materials that you can use on buildings. And I, I do feel that it's important to keep things consistent. And unless there is some extreme reason, and from reading, um, your, uh, board packet, um, financial difficulty is not one of them, you know, just because somebody says that I'm not gonna make as much money if you don't let me have this size sign, that's not a reason to give a variance to our ordinances. And, um, in this instance, I don't think that was relevant anyways, you know, this is a very successful business. And he said himself, you know, we could have moved the letters up higher and made them smaller, well, why didn't you? You know, that's, you, they, they could have found ways to comply with our ordinance. They chose not to, um, I think sometimes businesses feel that they can come into our city and pretty much do whatever they want, because we should be so grateful that they're coming into our city. You know, we do appreciate business coming to our city, but there's a fine line between appreciation and being a doormat. And, um, I'm really grateful that you stood up for the residents, our city planner, our building official, our planning commission, um, there's a lot of, um, it's a big team here, um, for the city, and thank you for upholding what, what we asked for. Thank you.
Being done, we will move on to board member comments. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you board, and thank you community. Um, I just, I felt like, like, um, two of the three questions that I asked, or was it more than three, but they didn't get answered sufficiently, so I feel comfortable in, um, letting them follow the ordinance that is written until we decide to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Troutman?
Uh, I have no comments.
Ms. Barconi?
I think, like I said, as a business owner, you have to follow the rules. And do your due diligence before you finalize, um, your property, your buildings, or whatever you have to do, so, rules aren't placed for a reason.
Mr. Roscoe?
I have no comments.
Well, thank you all very much for coming here, this was a hard one, it was a very hard sell and good presentation, and, uh, we stuck with it and stuck to the ordinance. I thank you all for, uh, your wisdom and your judgment. You guys have a good one, we'll catch you at the next meeting. Uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-six.
Support.
I have a motion, I have support, may I get a vote?
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Ms. Barconi?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Troutman?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
I do believe...